All right, it's now 6:00 P.M. We'll call this regular monthly meeting of the Dickinson County Board of Supervisors to order. If you would, I would ask Joe Glenn Sluss to please open the meeting in prayer, please.
Father God, we thank you for who you are. We thank you, Father, that it is from you that all blessings flow. We thank you for the life that you have given unto us. We pray that you bless each and every person that is here, each and every family. We thank you, dear heavenly Father, for your goodness, your grace, your mercy, and love that is found only in your son, Jesus Christ. Bless and preside over this meeting this evening, we pray. In Jesus' name we humbly ask. Miss, amen.
Amen.
Mr. Peter, should I please?
If everyone's standing facing the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Peter. You're welcome. That'll take us to item two, approval of several months' worth of meetings, of minutes. Are there any questions or concerns regarding those minutes?
Mr. Chair, I will note that on the September 19th, 2023 meetings, Ms. Lyle had worked today, a few corrections she made on them. Mr. Peters had a couple of questions, and she made those corrections per his request, so.
Any other questions or issues on those minutes? If there's none, we'll hear a motion to approve them.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye as well. Takes us to item three, approval of the agenda. Mr. Barton, are there any matters we need to take up on the agenda, or is it ready to go?
Mr. Chair, unless anyone has any changes to it, the agenda is ready to go. You'll notice the updated agenda was sent out earlier today with items in red, unless it's been added, and some things were removed that are straight through in blue, so.
Very good.
If there's no additions, I'll make a motion, we approve the agenda tonight.
We'll approve the agenda as it is on the table. Correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Is there a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye as well. The agenda is approved. That takes us to item four, the consent agenda piece. Are there any questions on regard to the information in the consent agenda?
I think all departments are doing good to give us an update monthly of what goes on in those departments.
Thank you, Ms. Karen. Does anybody else have questions for Mr. Barton?
I think this has been the busiest one I've saw since we started doing this. And I'm amazed at how much that they have done.
There a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda, A, B, C, D, E, F, and G.
And I'll second it.
Any other discussion?
Oh, sorry.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye as well. That takes us to item five. We have some young ladies here tonight that represent our Ridgeview volleyball team. I asked that they come, and I asked them for some certificates to be prepared recognizing their accomplishments this season. I'm very proud of how they played, how they carried themselves on and off the court. They're incredible young ladies and very good athletes, and they represented Dickinson County very well all season. Their coaches, Chris and Holly Fuller, just do a tremendous job with them, and they've established one of the premier programs in southwest Virginia, and I'm extremely proud of them. They set a school record for most wins. They had the most regular season wins of any volleyball team. I think that goes for Dickinson County history, so that would include Haystack, Irvington, and Clintwood. They had the first ever win over Gate City in school history. That's a big deal. I think they're maybe back-to-back state champions. So it was an incredible season, so I want to give them a round of applause, if you would. And I'll read off all their names real quickly. I know we have a big agenda, don't want to belabor them, but we had Ms. Jacey Dingus, who was on the team. Let's give her a round of applause. Ms. Brooke Beavers.
Maybe they could stand here.
Sure, if they're all here, if you would stand, if your name's called, you don't have to, but just as your name's called, Brooke Beavers. Great season. Josie Hill. Makili Owens. Correct me, Makili, you got a thousand digs for your career?
A C.S.
A C.S., okay, great job, very good. Jada Dingus. And my personal favorite, she's just an animal, Mackenzie Wright. I love how she plays. She's ferocious. Sega Mullins. Kenji Ramey. Another one of my favorites, Katie Hill, she's pretty mint too. And you had a thousand, what did you do? Did you have?
Yeah, I held the school record for digs.
Very good, that's awesome. Wassily Brown. And Rayland Strout. Holly, would you stand? Did I miss anybody? What?
Leah.
Leah Sutherland, how could I forget? We'll have to get yours, I think we missed Leah's. Okay, but we appreciate you all, what you've done, and how you represented Dickinson County, and I have your certificates here, and I just appreciate you all so much. But I may have missed her there, I don't know. We'll get Leah, if yours isn't in here, and I may have missed it, but we'll get it, but you had a, you're all-state, Leah Sutherland's all-state, so she had a great year. Coach, I thank you for having them come out. I know it's not, you know, it's a work night, and y'all got basketball, but I wanted to show you all how proud of you all we are, so.
Thank you, us.
Thank you all.
Thank you, guys.
Hope you all have a great basketball season.
Congratulations.
Yeah, that's good.
And thank you, Teresa, for helping me get that ready. That brings us to item six A, public comment. Podium's open for public remark, and the phone lines open as well, (276) 333-0357. Mr. Sturgis, would you care to read the public comment policy, please?
Sure.
I'll read the phone number again, (276) 333-0357.
And the policy is, there shall be a time limit for each individual speaker of three minutes. A representative of a group may have up to five minutes to make a presentation. Speakers are not permitted to donate time to other speakers. No speaker's time shall be extended except by unanimous consent or two-thirds vote of the board, board members present. Prohibited conduct, persons appearing before the board will not be allowed to campaign for public office, promote private business ventures, use profanity, use language which insults or demeans any person and/or when directed at a public official or employee when not related to his or her official duties. However, citizens have the right to comment on the performance, conduct, and qualifications of figures, make frivolous statements, interrupt other speakers, or engage in behavior that disrupts the meeting, engage in behavior that intimidates others, and address the board on issues that do not concern the services, policies, or affairs of the county.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
My name is Angela Stidham, and I'm a member of the McClure Quanus Club, and I'm here to apologize to the members of this board, with the exception of the chairman. He's done had his apology. Apparently, when we came to show you all what our club does for the community and for the children of the community, I embarrassed you all, I made you look like a fool, I made him feel like a fool, and I'm here to apologize to you four, and to the gentlemen over here, and to the ladies over here. That was not our intentions. My intention with the poster, that was completely my idea. If I had it here tonight, I'd do it again. I wanted you to see what this club does for the children of this community. Years ago, I was in a situation, I needed help, and the McClure Quanus helped me. And I'm here to tell you that I'm sorry if I offended you, if I made you look like a fool, I'm sorry. But according to Mr. Evans there, I made him look like a fool, and I made you all look like a fool by going around with the poster. But that was not my intentions.
Didn't bother me.
Okay. Thank you.
I want to tell you something. You didn't make me feel like a fool. I was glad to hear what you guys are doing. I think that was awesome, what you guys showed us that night.
Well, I thank you very much, and I'm sure the club would thank you.
Yeah.
If you're free Saturday night and Thursday, or, excuse me, Thursday night, come to our tree lighting, if you're free.
Angie, you did not offend me, I enjoyed your all's presentation, and also, I enjoyed the breakfast, and I'm not a breakfast person, but y'all had a wonderful breakfast for the bedrooms. I appreciate that.
You're very welcome.
You did not offend me.
Okay. I just wanted to come here tonight and have my say, because it was brought to my attention that I had made a fool out of every one of you all.
No, I enjoyed the presentation.
And that was not my intention by no means.
I think the McClure Quanus does a great job.
They did.
Like I told them before, I thought about joining down there. I don't know if they'd have me or not, but.
As far as I know, the door's open to anyone.
Well, you did not make a fool out of me.
Okay, I just wanted to set the record straight.
You didn't bother me in any way either. That's a, that's a past club that I've been a part of, and I appreciate what all you all do.
And we thank you, we appreciate you.
We appreciate the ballpark, too. We use it often.
Keep calling Mr. Moore.
It takes a big person to come up and apologize, and I'll salute you for that. But you didn't do it.
Good evening. My name is Butch Lambert, I reside at 1752 Buffalo Creek North, and it's kind of a pleasure to be here in front of you all this afternoon, but I want to address the letter that Mr. Evans wrote, and he indicates in his letter that he represents the board, because he points out that he's the chairman or the board supervisors. This letter was written on November 16th, 2023, and I want, there's several points in this letter, and if you don't have it, I'll be happy to share it with you. I know the county attorney has it, Mr. Barton has it, and I'm sure Mr. Evans has it, too, but just, there are several points, but I'm going to address just one point. And first of all, let me read you the subject line of this letter, and it goes, RE, Bradley Butch Crybaby Lambert. Now, doesn't that show a lot of maturity and integrity of the chairman of your board supervisors and the, and the clerk-elect of Dixon County? Isn't it, doesn't that, doesn't that make us all feel good, that we have a representative who can write letters like this and put that in the subject line? And, but it is what it is. Let me, let me address this one issue, since I've only got three minutes, I'm going to be, I'm going to hurry. I want to quote from Mr. Evans's letter. It says, "It is my belief that Mr. Lambert has and is currently intentionally holding up vital projects and monies for the families of Dixon County to receive high-speed internet," end of quote. Did you write that, Mr. Evans?
I did.
Okay.
We'll get to the, I guess we can, we're going to add you to the agenda.
Any competent attorney would research their facts before they would write something like that, and the facts being, they would go back and look at the minutes of the IDA board meeting, where those minutes show that every application that come before the board that dealt with Starlink was unanimously approved. Unanimously, Mr. Evans, that takes seven votes. That don't take one vote, it takes majority, and you've been on this board long enough to know that the majority votes. Anything less than majority, it doesn't get approved. Secondly, if Mr. Evans had gone back and read those applications before he made this statement, he would have found that the one that he's referencing was a Starlink application to put high-speed internet on the, on the health wagon. Great project. The board approved of that, we all thought, man, this is great. What, but the problem was, that application failed to reference how that would benefit the citizens of Dickinson County. The IDA board sent that application back so that it could be clarified. Guess what, folks? That application come back clarified was approved unanimously, Mr. Evans, not by one person, as you indicate. That one person is trying to uphold through a political vendetta that he says further in his letter, that I won't go into, that, that, that's not a problem, Mr. Evans. So what, I'm here tonight, when I, the chairman of the IDA is here, and I haven't discussed this with him, but here's what I'm recommending this board do tonight, through your attorney who's sitting over there. I recommend that this board contact the Inspector General of Virginia and start an investigation into board activities, especially individual members on the board. And so I'm going to leave it at that, if the board members, if the board members agree with Mr. Evans's activities, and Mr. Evans feels that these activities are right, then he should welcome an investigation from the Office of the Attorney.
I welcome it for the IDA, too, and for you holding up applications for 50 underserved families in Dickinson County. And that's a word that got to me, you don't have minutes. I asked our IDA director for minutes.
Not my fault.
Well, you're on IDA, ain't you?
Not my fault.
Nothing ever is.
You showed.
Where's your attorney? Is your attorney here? Can I talk to you?
Does, does, does any of the members like to, there?
I'll send it, I'll send it to them right away.
Since, since Mr. Evans represents the board in this letter.
What does it say, I represent the board?
He's representing you.
Is that on his letterhead, or this county's?
Mine, it's all mine.
Okay, which that?
And it's in response to a letter from Mr. Crybaby Lambert's attorney.
See, I'm saying, go again, that's what you have elected as clerk of Dixon County.
Is there any other public comments?
I haven't seen the letter.
Well, it's a private matter. Mr. Lambert sent a letter from, who's your attorney, Mr. Lambert?
My, my period's expired, Mr. Lambert.
Okay, of course. We can add you to the agenda later, I'll be happy to.
My name's Philip Terry Bartley, I'm with Haystack Rescue Squad. I apologize for the way I came tonight, but I got out of surgery a while ago, and I had no choice, and I told them I wouldn't be here. It happened at last, I think it was the last meeting, one of my members, and Mr. Yates, had some words during the meeting. I asked her to come that night because I wasn't available, and they had some words, and she wasn't fully informed on what had went on in the past, so I'm going to apologize for her action and what she said that night in public comment. And I'm going to tell you then what happened. I had asked Bobby Edwards, the town police in Haystack, which is under Mr. Yates, had asked me if he could talk to us about taking over the rescue squad, if him and Mr. Yates could, and I said, yes, I will talk to you. And they wanted information concerning the number of calls, who was doing our billing, and all this. Well, Mr. Yates was supposed to meet with us, and for some reason, I don't remember why, he couldn't meet with us that night. But Mr. Edwards and I met. Mr. Edwards told me, said he talked to Mr. Yates, and they had discussed it, and they didn't see no way that they could help us. So I left it, but never asked them for help. Well, at that board meeting, that was one of the subjects brought up, Grace Stanley, bad mouthed her, and I told the town council the other, what, two weeks ago, Larry? Y'all had, three weeks ago, when they had their meeting, I would make a public apology for that, and that's what I'm doing. I'm not a bit too good to apologize if I feel I've done something, or one of my members had done something wrong, and I think all of you all can make it. But the town actually paid our last month's power bill for one bill, $477 and some few cents. I presented it to them in writing, and they paid it. And they told me if I would bring them the next one, they would talk about it. I haven't received it yet, but I will when I receive, but that's what my purpose was of coming tonight. And I got out of surgery, or I got home about 1:00 o'clock today from surgery, but I wanted to make this apology because I gave my word that I would, and that means a lot to me.
Thank you.
Thank you, Terry.
Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. In call.
Podium is still open. Final call. In call. We will move on from public comment. We got six B, I think Mr. Kennedy, it actually has to be officially on the docket, so I'll turn it over to him.
My name's Ben Kennedy, I'm from Canyon Ridge. Mr. Chairman, board members, Mr. Barton, apologize ahead, I'm going to be reading most of what I've got to say here, because I don't want to leave anything out, and I want to kind of cover everything, but the main reason I'm here, well, it's a couple of main reasons, but number one is I want to express my gratitude to the board for appropriating the funds for the new fire station on Canyon Ridge. And this station's already made a big impact on our community, and everyone I've talked to in the community has nothing but praise for the fire station. Now, this station allows the firemen to house two trucks instead of one, and both trucks have been very instrumental in containing recent fires and preventing several thousand dollars of damage to homes. And I think Mrs. Willis probably attests to that, with her sister being evacuated from the fire and, and everything. But before I go on about the fire, I want to thank Mr. Barton personally, because he's, of course, y'all made a good decision putting him on as a county administrator, but he's done a lot of legwork to help this fire station get off the ground. Appropriating money is a major step, and we appreciate that, but as you, as he can tell you, there's a lot of planning takes place, a lot of phone calls that had to take place, and to get the building organized, it takes a lot of organizing to get the building erected, and we had a lot of major problems at the beginning, and he helped us solve those and get through those. Without his help and dedication, it would have been extremely difficult to get the station built properly. And if you haven't seen the station, I've got pictures for you up there of the new station. If you haven't seen the old station, Ben had a video on YouTube, and it's got about 33,000 views from all over the United States and also out of the country, and it's been great publicity for Dixon County, so y'all getting a lot of publicity out of this fire station. The comments received on the video have been extremely complimentary, and we had comments about how nice it is to see such a small community get the support they needed for the fire station. And one person commented, they had a multimillion-dollar fire station, but they so humbled to see this station being built for our community. And for those who haven't seen the old station or the new one, if you want to look at that video, you're welcome to do so, I've got on the back information how you can get there to the video. And to read the comments, a lot, a lot of comments, you need to read those to see how people relates to this particular fire station. And you don't have to, you have to subscribe to get to the comments, but it don't cost anything, so don't worry about any money there, but I would recommend you read those comments, they're very, very complimentary, and some of you may have already read them, I think, too, a couple are going here follows, follows that. Now, getting back to our station, and the values brought to our community, on November 6th, a brush fire occurred and threatened several homes on Canyon Ridge community.
Go ahead.
He's on the agenda.
Okay. Yeah, right there.
The call came at 3:30 that afternoon, and the first truck in Canyon Ridge, and that's called the Clintwood Fire Station 2, I call Canyon Ridge for this purpose here, but it's Clintwood Fire Station 2, they arrived on the scene at 3:42, that's like a 12-minute response time. So without that station up there, we couldn't have responded that quickly, so that's one value it's already been. Also, Command 1 was there within minutes, and they prevented the fire from burning a nearby house. However, the fire got pretty intense and spread rapidly toward, toward other homes and buildings, and other departments in the county were called in, and just within a short time, we had another truck in Clintwood, and I've written all these people who'll be here tonight that asked to speak, but Forestry got there, Philip and those guys did an excellent job, and the Santa Ridge Fire Department, the Mexico Fire Department, Haystack Fire Department, as well as Coburn, and I don't know if I've left anybody out, of course EMS was there to help in case of injuries, the police department's there to help with traffic control, but they did an excellent job containing that fire. And what amazed me was how well and how organized these departments were, I mean, there's a lot of people up there, a lot of trucks going back and forth, getting water, bringing it in, and they were so well-coordinated with each other. It's just like, I don't know, clockwork or something, but everybody knew what to do. Nobody was trying to tell somebody else, do this, do that, it all just came together. And when I got there, the smoke was thick, you couldn't even see the houses in the area, and when the smoke cleared several, several hours later, we could see all the houses still standing, and not one house was lost, and that's even though the fire was within inches of feet of some houses, the, all the homes were saved. The first night, firefighting went on till 1:30 a.m., approximately, and it went on for about 10 hours. Then another fire at the same location flared up a couple days later. And the county fire departments and the forestry fought for 20 straight hours getting this fire into control, 20 hours, and this was even more widespread and intense. And firemen, a couple times, well, several times, was in a lot of danger, and they totally exhausted, but kept on going on, and most of our volunteer fire departments worked 30 hours getting these fires under control, the 10 hours before and the 20 hours after, and not only them, but I mean forestry and everybody, but we had volunteer fire department out there, no, not paid. How much were they paid? Nothing. They didn't get, the volunteer fire department got no pay. They volunteered their times and lives to save this community. You really needed to be there to realize what a good job they did. You can't just, you can't describe it, you just had to be there. And while they's in that, of course, most of us are in our beds at home, taking it easy, but they did a tremendous job, and we owe a big debt of gratitude to them and other first responders that showed up that week. I mean, it's kind of a week-long fire is what it ended up being. They did an amazing job, and actually saved the entire community, it could have been like a Gatlinburg fire, if one house had caught on fire, it would have spread, it would have taken the whole neighborhood out. And we had, I mean, they had a lot of help, too, from Rachel Chapel Church, I appreciate them. They opened up the doors of first responders, and also, we had the community people, and not just our community, I think Clintwood, everybody else came in, and they brought food and drinks in for the firemen and the people that's evacuated and so forth, and that, the support's just unbelievable. Until my son and grandson joined the fire department, I didn't realize how much time firefighters spent protecting our county. And not only do they respond to fires and accidents, but they spend time repairing trucks, keeping them in good condition. They keep them washed and looking like new, as one of their board members can testify to, they look like new trucks. I think the newest truck, I'm not sure, it may be 2020, 21, that picked up maybe. And I also want to thank AC Belavins for allowing the use of his truck shop in Coburn to replace the suspension springs on one of the fire trucks. Brian Belavins, AC, and Ben did this work free of charge. They saved the department several hundred dollars. If someone had followed the truck to Coburn, they might have wondered why the fire truck was going to Coburn. That's where the shop is, and that's where the repair work was done. Just a few nights before the fire in Rachel Chapel Community, one of the trucks that responded, the mayor's station. Just a few nights before the fire in Rachel Chapel community, one of the trucks that responded, the mayor's station had to be repaired. It'd been down for several weeks. And again, a lot of money was saved just with these firemen working on their own trucks. And it'd be nice if the county had a good certified diesel mechanic, a good, not a shade tree mechanic, but a good mechanic to work on the trucks for these fire departments, trys trucks, everybody else that needs things done. But they did a lot of work keeping these trucks running and looking good. And sometimes, you know, you might see a county fire service truck, you might see it in Palm, you may see it in Wise, you may see it in Coburn. There's a lot of times that we have to go out, I know Philip went out and hunted parts for our truck. And, you know, saved a lot of money by finding the right part, which we didn't think they could find, but they found it. And I have a lot of confidence in our firefighters. That, and, you know, I don't believe they use these service trucks for personal use. And after the job I saw them do on the Rachel Chapel fire, I guess if I saw one day it on the beach, I wouldn't even question them, I would say, thank you. In closing, these departments request money. And I'd ask for you and the new members, and I've noticed one or two new members out here on board supervisors coming up, that you can do all you can do to help these guys and women, men and women. These trucks ran twenty to thirty straight hours during that fire week. I mean, they can't cut them off, they have to run and get the pumps working and everything. So it takes a lot of time, that takes a lot of fuel. And they, I know it's rough on their budgets. And it's a lot of wear and tear on the trucks, too. The board should look for ways to fund these fire departments. They shouldn't have come in and asked over and over and over. You all should find a way to do it because they are so valuable to our community. If you take just the week of the fire, for instance, you multiply thirty hours by thirty men and women, then that would be nine hundred hours of free labor. And if you had to pay that, that's a lot, that's several thousand dollars that you got right there from our volunteer fire department, men and women, rescue, first responders, everybody. Just think of the unpaid labor these men and women gave to the county. Think of the money they spent out of the pockets on fuel. They have to go to the stations to man the trucks, they have to attend training sessions, they have to attend weekly meetings. And some of them take on personal vehicles to the crash scenes if it's an accident or fire or whatever, because the fire trucks all weighed out on the scene, so they have to show up. So they have to get there using all money. And just think about the hours spent keeping these trucks looking like new. I know one of the trucks at Clintwood Station Two, which Caney Ridge, you got a picture there. If you're looking at the picture, one on the left, just guess how old that truck is?
Oh, yeah.
Thirty-five years old.
Yeah.
But it still looks great. Now, who else in the county would work as hard as they do without getting paid? And sometimes, we don't give credit where credit is due. I just wonder, or I just want you to think how important our fire departments are and how hard these men and women work. And I know Shelby and I think Mr. Peters both have donated money to the fire departments and I appreciate that. And if the rest of you haven't, it'd be a good time to do so because they've gone with the budget. One fire, it went down a whole lot. But anyway, I thank you for your time, thank you for your appreciation. I do wish the new board members coming on would consider and remember what I've said tonight and try to help these people out. Thank you.
Okay, I am, hey, Benny, thank you. Spot on. I want to say a couple of things. I recently attended a meeting. And it's a statewide problem to fill the holes that these gentlemen and ladies are filling right now. They're struggling to find volunteers. And when you talk about training and stuff, there's a lot of little things that they have to learn. They're not little, but there are things that you wouldn't think of for a general fireman. It's not simply throwing water on a fire. It's hazmat training when there's a toxic spill and all these other things that they have to respond to. And there's requirements to go to school for that. So the costs are horrendous. They're, as you said, they're not paid. And they're struggling across the Commonwealth on this right now. And we're giving them, what, twenty-seven thousand dollars a year each department? We're not sustaining this. This is the, one of the critical services this county needs and we're not sustaining it properly. The hope was that with the casino money being a new funding source, that we'd be able to put that in there, but it didn't. It just was plugged right into our budget and used elsewhere. And these guys, when they do come and ask us for money, they're not asking us for something they need now. They're asking them for something that they needed yesterday. It's a hole, it's broke, and they've got to have it fixed now or they're not going to be able to provide something that's needed. And unfortunately, I don't have a fix. I tried, you know, until it gets plugged into the budget because it needs to be treated like the sheriff's office, the treasurer's office, any of these offices. They're a requirement. And I want you to think about it. And this is rescue squads, too. Our population is predominantly elderly. And there are more than anyone going to need these services. So my heart's out to them. Now, there's one other thing I wanted to ask. Butch, did you get to finish your comments?
I had a few more, but I'm okay.
Well, well, in fairness, he should be allowed to finish his comments because, and I'm not, I would never cut you off, Benny, because what you had was all great information. But again, when you do something and you open that door, you need to treat everyone fairly.
Mr. Kennedy's on the agenda.
He's chairman, may I speak?
Yeah.
If Mr. Peters is being.
Sure, but I just want to clarify, Mr. Kennedy's on the agenda.
Okay, I didn't know if he was going to be here for that or not. Okay, good.
It's not that I let him talk, he's on the agenda.
Okay, okay, I'm fine.
Go ahead, Ms. Willis.
I was out putting up election signs, it was Monday evening. And we already saw the fire trucks go by. We had been to two different ones and we ended up at the ridge where I vote. And we were putting up signs, we could smell smoke. And I went up on the playground to pick up the kids, they were with me, they was up there playing and we could see it. We knew it was fairly close, we didn't know if it's Rock House or either Rachel Chapel. So we pulled out to go home and my sister was screaming, it looked like her house was going to be burnt down. And here I was, trying to, didn't want to go because the fire trucks was already there and I didn't want to block them in or do any damage to hinder them. My sister had been to the doctor, she got up at six o'clock to go to the doctor, she was down on her back, she went to Kingsport. She come home and she was just kind of sleeping and resting and didn't know the fire was that bad. And one of the neighbors pulled her out of the house and saved her life. And then she saw that the fire winded, shifted to her. And she could see the fire trucks. So she backed out and went out there and she said her chicken house, I guess, was caught fire. And she said it just swept over top of her car. It burnt the seats, you know, she's got a new car, she had it covered, it burnt the seats and holes in her car as she was going to get the fire department. Well, in the meantime, I was calling nine-one-one or to tell them to send the fire trucks out there. She lives in my grandfather's home, he had built it ninety-nine years ago. And if it caught fire, it would've went instantly, it was, it's completely covered under the shingles with wormy chestnut. And anyway, if you saw the pictures with the fence, the yard fence right there, that was her house. Her house is within, I guess, five feet of that fence. And Philip told me, had they not already been on the scene, that house would've been burnt down. And he said, by them being on the scene already, when the fire shifted, it saved her house. And it saved several houses that night on the Outhorn Ridge, which is basically most of my family. If it wasn't my family, I grew up with them. And then come Thursday, it was my dad's house that my sister owns it also. And it was his garage and an old crib that he had, got right to the back of it, but they saved everything that was there. And I really appreciate what they did. And they worked hard. And my sister really appreciates what they did. And we had Thanksgiving dinner in the house Thursday, which I was sick, I didn't eat. I battled bronchitis, I don't know if it's from the smoke or not, or if it was from a grandchild. But anyway, we were so thankful that we still had that old house to go back to that she lives in. I'm finished, Mr. Chairman.
Anybody else on Mr. Kennedy's piece? Well, I don't necessarily disagree with Mr. Peters' assessment and I certainly appreciate Mr. Kennedy's remarks. There's not been a single request, I don't think, that I've made to any of the fire departments to help with our recreation areas or to help with funerals or to help with whatever that's been turned down. So I certainly appreciate the men and women that do what you do, it doesn't go over missed. But at the same time, I know money talks and BS walks and that's the bottom line. And so there's not a better financial person probably in the country than Mr. Barton. And I have no doubt if the board directs him to find a different funding formula for you, then that's what'll happen and he'll find the money to make it happen. I feel like our board's done the best that we could do. We plugged in about fifty thousand dollars for workers' comp protection for the men and women. And I know it was a day late and dollar short for a couple of your members. But to try to fix a problem so it wouldn't be a problem for you in the future, because you do, most of you, if not all, have jobs outside of your volunteer role. And so it was important to me and the rest of us that if you're injured while doing what we've all talked about, protecting us, saving us, coming out in the middle of the night, keeping homes from being burned, if you're injured, doing that, then you have some protection and a blanket to make sure your family's taken care of. So that's one thing that we have done. Does it help you when your trucks broke down or help you when your equipment's broke? No, but it is something that we try to do. And so, but anyway, we do appreciate you very, very much, we really do. So that's all I, does anybody else have anything they want to say?
Mr. Chairman, can I make a motion? And I've already talked to Mr. Barton about it, that we give the, I think there's four fire departments in our area. And guess what, I own, I have two in my district. I have the Caney Ridge, I mean Clintwood and Sandy Ridge, both in my district. So I'm the only district that has two. But, and I spread my money equally between. And also, I would like to give them an additional thousand dollars tonight to overcome some of their expense. Every time I was at the Rachel Chapel Road, somebody was driving a truck out there to fill up the water. And you know, that took a lot of fuel and expense on the truck to run it that much, just to fill up the tankers. And.
As far as I'm concerned, you can make any motion you want.
Okay, I made a motion that we give them a thousand dollars tonight to help overcome some of the expense that they went through that week. And then they were back out one day, was it last week, on the Wednesday night or Thursday night? They had another big fire on Rachel Chapel that they had to deal with. It was a garage, I believe. But anyway, I know they've been out a lot of expense in the month of November. And I'd like to make that motion that we give them an extra thousand dollars tonight.
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye as well.
I'll say aye, but I also want a caveat. There's one thing we didn't plan. And Benny, you hit the nail on the head, that truck's thirty-five years old or whatever. We've got to start finding a way to fund a fire truck and spread that around. Ambulances were able to get grants for, fire trucks were not, and that's part of the sustainment thing, too.
Yeah, the reach.
And I, we didn't fund that, it was requested, but we didn't fund that with all the COVID money.
Mr. Barton, do you get that motion?
She's got it, she's drunk dealing.
All right, then we'll move on, anything else? Move on to item seven, the Ag Center paving contract, Mr. Barton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And the addendum left before you, the first tab is seven A, that will be the bid summary sheet. Of course, our bids were due yesterday at two o'clock on paving the non-V dot portion of the Ag Center Road. We received two successful bids on this from Boyd's Construction and McFaul Estimating and Paving. Boyd's had the low bid of one-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand four ninety. We're asking for a motion to enter into contract with Boyd's Construction for the paving of the non-V dot portion of the Ag Center Road for the proposed unit price amounts and to give the county administrator authorization to sign the necessary documents.
I'll make that motion.
You're second. I'll second it. Any other questions or discussion on that? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye as well. Seven B, Mr. Barton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Back in your packets, you go to the old six B, it's listed in your packet. What you have before you is a deed of easement from M&amp;M Development and Rental, which is Mr. McFaul's, one of Mr. McFaul's companies. He has granted a deed of easement for us for the property from Route eighty-three. That goes all the way up to join IDA land at the agricultural center. There's also a plot showing the land, but it gives a necessary right of way that we need in order to get the improvements made to both portions of the road, the V dot and the non-V dot portion. And it is the amount of right of way required for a V dot on that. So what we'll need is just a motion to accept that deed of easement, so.
I'll make that motion.
You're second.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Well, that'll bring us down to eight. I guess it'll be, this will be a now resolutions, emergency declaration resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In your packet, that's going to be listed as the old seven.
Right to be.
Seven A.
Old A, no, that's right, eight, seven, eight.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
On the older gen, right.
Seven B on the older gen in the book because our number changes. Of course, you know, back a couple of weeks ago and all this was going on, November thirteenth, we did a declaration of emergency due to the dry weather conditions. You know, I spoke with each one of you on the phone and you've judged what was going on, everybody was good. Mr. Peters, our director of emergency management, he signed off on this. We got that put into place. And so what we'll need to do is just, we need to ratify the action that's already been taken on that as our first step. So we'll move to ratify the resolution.
I'll make a motion that we ratify this resolution.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Just to give a little backdrop, so this was what we done just following the Rachel Chapel fires, trying to mitigate any future fires. We done it that way through council and through Mr. Peters as the emergency management director. So we're just taking formal ratification of that decision and I appreciate you all getting that done. So we did have to call a special meeting. So all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And that brings us to.
Eight B two.
Eight B two on the new agenda, I don't know where it is in the packet.
There's nothing in the packet on that, we just need to end the burn.
While we're here, what of some of our fire people? Do we believe it's okay to end the burn ban now? Y'all have an opinion, one more or the other, Mr. Good, yeah, there you go.
I want to give a part for.
Yeah, go ahead.
We're asking y'all to lift it.
To lift it.
Yeah, because we also got scraw burning we got to do, and we can't do that with the burner ban in.
Good enough for me.
So I think it's safe enough to lift it.
And I wanted to also explain, so you folks understand, that needed to happen immediate, so that's why.
It should've happened quicker, really, but.
Yes, and I, we appreciate.
But now it's time to lift it, so it's.
We appreciate y'all doing it. We appreciate all the volunteer fire departments coming and helping us, sheriff's office.
We appreciate you, too.
Yeah, absolutely.
We appreciate everybody that brought food and water. I mean, we, it was, it was a bad day. I mean, it hit all at once. And like she said, you know, we did, about lose homes. But I mean, it was just, when it blowed up, it blowed up.
Wind didn't drive.
Wind didn't drive. Wind didn't drive.
And all the people that lived on Raw Bridge, they're my family, they're my family, church family I grew up with, and just neighbors that I grew up with. I grew up over there also. And it was just wonderful what y'all did.
That, that, that week, there, we, I worked, like I said, I worked five weeks straight. Didn't take a break. Every day.
In both roles.
Yep, so sometimes I get home at 2:00 or 3:00 in the morning, get called back out. I got called out one morning, I got home at what, 4:00, and got called back out at 5:00. Same fire.
We appreciate you.
Yeah, we really appreciate you.
Anybody have any other question for Mr. Coop? Thank you.
No, but I'll make the motion to end the burn van.
You're second.
I'll second it.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Well, 8C, Mr. Barton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. 8C is, of course, item 7C, the next tab in your packet. Given later before you hear from the Virginia 911 Services Board. Mr. Powers is here with us today. Of course, he applied for a grant for his staff, for all the 911 employees. And the purpose of the grant is a staff retention, staff recognition grant. Help with retention on that. The total award amount was $33,750.
Hey, that's great.
Good job.
On the next page of your packet, you see the funding allocations. That's $2,500 for a full-time grant, eligible position, $1,250 for each part-time grant, eligible position. Of course, there's no match on this from the board.
No match.
We're asking that, Mr. Strudger looked at this when it was first given, and we didn't have to take any further action, but just approving the grant on that tonight to allow them to be able to give this to their staff.
We don't get many chances like this, guys. That's a great job right there.
Shouldn't nobody leave, the full amount of that would not be executed either. We were allowed to basically put some fluff in, and some of the mortgage in the grant allowed us to, for lack of better terms, let's say I have a dispatcher leave, I can take $1,500 and offer a higher bonus. It's not much, but it's more than we've been able to do in the past. So hopefully, should the need arise, that would help us attract, you know, a better qualified person.
Well, that's a fantastic job right there. Is there a motion to approve that?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
I'll second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
As well. Great job, Digger. Item 8F.
8F in your packet, if you'll flip over a couple tabs to the 7F in your packet. What we have before us is a request from the Dickinson County Recovery Incorporated. Is a request for some of the opioid abatement funds. I think we have, Ms. Kaylee Deal, is she with us tonight? You might come forward, if you don't mind, to the podium. I know Mr. Peters is on the board of this group. Michelle Robinette works with them. Currently, they're operating a sober living home here in Dickinson County. They're leasing a double wide from behavioral health down here. I think last time I had you have seven or eight ladies, I think, in there right now. Of course, they rent some space here in the DC for an office space. They're doing a really good work. They're looking to try to find a place to lease for a men's residence as well. They're receiving a grant from VAR, and it pays a big chunk of the cost, but that isn't everything that they need. You know, they collect user fees from the residents and things like that. But Mr. Peters, may I see all that you explained a little more about what you're doing and what the request is for?
For what, but, forgive me, but so this, we would need, if we, we would sign on to the request, assuming we approve it or whatever?
Yeah, I should be clear that this would be out of the county's opioid abatement funds that we have.
We would be actually making the application...
But would be, actually, it would be coming from our funds that we're holding.
That we actually already have.
We already have, yes.
Very good. And this would be a suitable...
It would be. I have sent that, and it is approved. We have $76,681 on hand right now is what our balance is in that account. And I did send this to our regional representative in southwest Virginia, and it is in, those will use some funds.
Sorry about that. Go ahead.
Hello, my name is Kaylee Deal, and I'm the Director for Dickinson County Recovery. So the goal of our program is to provide a sober, safe living environment for those who are in early recovery from substance use disorder. So the need for that in our county is great. We have a lot of individuals who don't have a safe place to go, that they can prevent relapse from occurring. So our program provides a structured environment that aims to create an environment that supports sobriety and helps the peers avoid trigger that could lead to relapse. A sober, a sober living home provides peers with everyday life skills that they need to be able to go back into society successfully. A lot of our peers, they have a big support system within our program. That's important in recovery. If you don't have a support system, you have nobody you can rely on to help. We help peers establish coping skills to help with triggers and cravings. We also help them with being able to establish food stamps and Medicaid. Most of our peers come straight from jail, and all they have when they come to us is the clothes that are on their back. So having the support of the county is a big thing. We have, you know, a couple stores within the county that help provide clothes. And then we have the food pantry that helps, the social services office that helps. Peers, when they come to us, we provide them with support groups. They attend three to five support groups a weekly, and they also attend community meetings. We've had one peer that has been with us for eight months now, and her success in this program has been wonderful. She stated that if she didn't have this program, she don't know where she would be now. There's a great need for this in Dickinson County, and requesting for this funding will help us maintain this program and get the sources, resources that we need to keep it up and running.
I'll add to it, not too much, you covered it, which you're the expert, because you deal with it day in and day out, Kaylee, and thank you. This is a nationwide problem, and for the Commonwealth, we have the preponderance of the problem here in our area. And I, I'll share with you, I was at a meeting recently in other districts, areas where there's resources available to them that we don't have. We're a rural area. This is a more difficult challenge for this community, because we're rural. It's not a recovery program. It's, they go through recovery, and then they come to this. And our, what we do with, through this home, is to try to provide an environment to help keep them on track and keep them clean, and get them acclimated back into the community, working and so forth. And as you know, being in this area, the working part is another challenge we face. And, but we are getting, she's been able to get some folks some jobs. And just to highlight, you all have heard of the rehab center they're doing up at Run Onion. IDA is very involved. You're opening up a male facility with plans later to do a female facility. We went the other direction here. We opened up the female facility, and we're working towards, I think we've got some ideas to start again, and I haven't gotten with you, Kaylee. But to try, we've got a location for a male facility. We're hoping we can make work. It is a great effort, and I can tell you, there, what I learned in this meeting was, you've got to be attacking this at every level. Even in the jail system, we need to be attacking it to try to get to these folks and help them recover, so that they can come back to society and be able, you know, and fit in and be able to keep a clean life and get back with their families and stuff. And we're, we're working hard to do that. It's, it's a necessity. I won't, I'm not trying to get political, but you go in and you look at what's going on in the southern border, that certainly isn't helping this problem, as I'm sure the sheriff can tell you, because he's seeing some of that stuff come up here now. So, but thank you, Kaylee, for what you do.
Thank you.
How, how many women did you stay or live in?
We currently have seven peers in the home right now.
And that's out here?
Yes, ma'am.
That's wonderful.
Yes, it is.
How many can it hold?
We can have up to nine, and we will, we're looking to have nine peers in the home the second week in December.
Good.
Thank you. It's a wonderful program. It's a great, great thing to have here in Dickinson County.
One other thing I'll mention too, just because someone steps out of line and goes back to the substance abuse and that, doesn't mean it's a failure, because that's, that's a normal thing that happens in this. It takes time after time again. I, I have a brother that, 40 years he was involved in this. Now he's a spokesperson helping people like Kaylee with these kind of issues. So it, some people, it's a difficult challenge to find your way out.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Any motions?
Make a motion that we, it's, she's asking to grant, to clock for grant. $75,000.
No, for clarity, we have funds, there's different buckets of money. Some's paid directly to the county, you know, the next, you know, 10-plus years right now. And, you know, we've received, we've only made one disbursement so far, and that was towards the rehab project money that went towards that a couple of months ago. And we have $76,681 right now is our balance. And they're asking for $75,000 of that money that the county's actually holding. So if that's the amount and the desire of the board, then we need a motion to make that.
I'll make that motion.
You're second. Or a discussion?
May I ask what was the motion? To give how much?
$75,000.
Okay, thank you.
Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Any other questions or discussions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
As well.
I'm going to abstain because I'm on that board. I don't know if I have to. I guess I should ask.
You don't have to.
Okay, then I'm yes.
Yeah, appreciate, appreciate that.
Okay, 8G?
8G, board members in your addendum packet, the second tab in your addendum packet is 8G, it looks like this, it's an Excel sheet with the yellow strip on the bottom. When we spoke last board meeting, we were having some discussion about the $30,000 appropriation to some of the towns. And, you know, what I was instructed to do is to bring an update as to where we are on the current year budget to this meeting. And that's what you have with you here. Of course, when we adopted our budget, our reserve for contingencies, which is the money that we set aside within the budget for the things that come up that we really don't know, equipment failures, breakdowns, things like that, was where the leanest it's been in some time. We only had $105,157. We did a budget amendment on August 22nd. We had some changes as far as with the rural development grant that we applied for with Sheriff's Office, and we had a grant match on an additional SRO grant they were fortunate to be awarded with. And we had a little bit of extra money that came from the regional jail with our refunds. There's a few changes like that in that. But after that, it brought our balance down to $67,720. And since then, some of the things we've been faced with, of course, the casino money, we budgeted $700,000, we only received $625,000. So there's another $75,000 reduction. We appropriated $30,000 to the town of Clinchco to replace their coal road funds. So it was another reduction of $30,000. The $5,000 given to the various civic organizations over the course of three different meetings totaled $45,000. The VS BFA loan that ended up having the balloon at the end that no one was aware of, that matured, it was, it puts $51,356 over budget. And lastly, after the state budget amendment, this is just an estimate right here, but after the state budget amendment that was recently passed, and looking at the current RLM of the schools, we won't know this number till after the March 31st 8:00 AM. But we're projecting that will be due an initial $39,219 to the schools later on, whenever the state does that budget adjustment on that. So with that, that puts us, you know, currently about $172,855 over budget based on that. Another item in the email I sent out to you earlier that I've been watching, of course, each month is the census numbers are sent from the regional jail. This year, we're currently budgeted at 60 inmates. And for the periods of July 1st through the end of October, our average is about 70.96 is what we're running. You know, we're running almost 11 inmates over budget, and with, you know, the cost per day being, you know, $47, $48 a day roughly, if that trend continues at 70.96 through the rest of the year, that's going to be $191,000 that we'll have to come up with at year end on that. So, you know, that number could vary, it could go back down. We had two high months, the last two months have been down somewhat, but still, we're going to be over budget, which don't know how much. That's one of those things that I've been watching each month as the numbers post. So that's kind of the update that I promised. I'll try to answer any questions that anyone has.
Anything from the meetings you attended?
I did, as far as when it comes to the schools on that in particular, you know, they're looking, well, of course, let me back up, you're going into next year, the new biennial, we're having a new biennial budget. There's a lot of discussion with the schools as far as how that funding method may change. We did get today the composite, the local composite index, the LCI number, which has went down about a percent and a half, which is good in our favor when it comes to matches and things like that. That will benefit us some. But at the state level, there's been some reports and studies on, they're looking at potentially going away from the LCI to another formula, which could, in my opinion, very adversely affect us in Dickinson County as far as how much we have to pay as far as with our match on the schools.
And I would add, I sat in on the school steering committee meeting, and there's a lot of dialogue about how the SOQ model, that a lot of them were acknowledging it's broke. And they're going to be attacking, and I, I can just tell you, I'd expect with some of the potential changes that may come in the future out Richmond, you'll see some of those come in, because a lot of things are going to change in the next few years, I think.
Again, this is just informational agenda item here, no votes or anything are needed. But I will answer any questions, or if more information is desired, I can, you know, bring additional information back to next month's meeting.
Oh, I will also add, last term, a lot of the stuff came up on the SOQ model, and people went out to Richmond and questioned it. And we were warned, we don't know what's going to come of this, but we were warned then, be careful what you ask for, because the current model really fails, fares our rural districts, and we don't know what it may come. And I, and just to give you an idea, I haven't looked at this in a lot of years. I didn't look at it too much this term, but back in last term, you need to picture something. What would you think if you lived up in Fairfax or Loudoun County, and they did the SOQ model, and the state gave you 26% of the budget of what's required for funding, and you're having to pay yourself for 75, 76%? And then they look down here in southwest, and they're paying 75, 76% of us, our stuff, versus we pay 25%. And it's going to go down even more now. And that may all, and this LCI thing will be calculated every two years, and you've got another big thing that's going to affect what, how they look at us, and that's this upcoming assessment could affect it two years from now. I, I'm speculating, you, the Commissioner of Revenue's Office may be able to speak to that more, but, but all these are just what is right now. We just got to, Larry's got an important job to keep an eye on. The future board's going to have a lot to look at on all this.
So this is $172,855,000 in the red right now. If we have to pay the additional funds for the, on that $191,000, that's on the jail stuff, and then if we do the $90,000, 30, I mean, not 90, but 60,000. 60,000 additional to the other two towns, plus the $5,000 or so tonight, all of that just keeps adding to our $172,000 in the red. And the end of the year, you're talking about the end of the fiscal year of June 30th, not December.
Correct, yeah, our fiscal year, June 30th.
So we have to do something by then to fix our overage. Okay, so we're probably, we're looking at over $400,000.
It's potentially...
It's a potential overage, and we've still got seven months to go in our budget year.
Of course, all that severance comes from one mine predominantly. One safety incident, one disaster, one change in legislation. What's that? Yeah, but I think most of it comes from one, is why I said that. But I, you know better than I do, but...
Five, I think Harry said that the other day. There were five working coal mines in Dixon County, but the largest one is at...
Is providing for the preponderance of it.
But we are thankful that our coal severance has went up.
But our coal severance is ticking up a little bit, and our gas is way behind budget right now.
Gas is way behind, and it used to be about $1,000.
Coal, we're a little above budget right now also. Again, that's very volatile as far as, you know, changes can be.
Yeah, but it's also hard to say, okay, what if we get a million dollars additional? Are we going to sit here and figure out how to spend $999,000 of that million? You know? You know? It's hard, it's hard to stay within that amount, and there isn't any of these organizations that we don't want to fund, but it's hard to fund.
Right outside of the budget.
Yeah, yeah, outside of the budget cycle, you know? So I would just encourage all of y'all to be thinking that come February, and we start needing budget stuff in to start discussing, you need to get your needs in in February for voting on by June thirtieth, not come in here in July and say, oh, I forgot, we need thirty thousand, or we need fifteen thousand, you know?
I do have one more thing I wanna...
But, you know, and that's nothing bad that I wanna, I don't want it to be taken as bad, but when you operate on a budget, you have to, we need to stay in that budget as much as possible. And we have blew it this final year of our term, we have blew it. We stayed in budget three years out of four, but it's, it's been tough.
I do have something else to add. We, first off, I voted no on the budget because I knew it was no good. I knew that we, we no longer are planning for garbage trucks, we had a truck driver almost killed because they were driving old hammy-down trucks. We were programming money for that. We need to look to the future, because we need GIS mapping. We had started work on that, and we backed away from that now because we had to. But, and these are things, and then I told you earlier tonight, fire stations and rescue squads aren't sustained properly, and those are critical services. These are all things that we really, and what you gotta remember is, you may have your wants, but you need to understand, the board here needs to not play gate to that and look at where the holes are, because we gotta start fixing the problems. The holes that are, where nothing's being done. And fire department's a classic example of that. Twenty-eight thousand, because we gave a thousand dollars this year, tonight, I mean, so that's just not sustainable.
Five or six? Five, five departments?
I'm done.
Four departments.
Anybody have anything else? Just, Bart, anything else?
That's all I have.
On that piece? All right, that takes us to eight H.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Eight H is also in the addendum packet, it's the next item. This is something I'd read, I spoke with each one of you on today, this is the schools are applying, today was the deadline for school construction assistance programs at the state. What they're looking at doing is installing a bus canopy at Ridgeview Middle School and Ridgeview High School, it'd be two separate applications, but the total cost on that's approximately two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand. And if approved for this state grant, it would get, you know, thirty percent of that, or sixty-seven thousand, five-hundred to go towards that. The school wasn't asking us for any money to, to pay the difference, but what we have to do as the local governing body is to send a letter in support of the application, you know, saying that we're gonna maintain the local revenues dedicated to public education, and so, you know, we all talked about that earlier, and what we did is actually ratify this, I spoke with you all, and actually sign this and gave this back to Ms. Robinson, because she had to have it in by five o'clock today, so. Need a motion to approve this?
You need a motion, um, you know, you're good with it, the way you wrote the letter, I'll make a motion, we approve it.
I'll second the motion.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
As well. Item eight, aye. Mr. Mullins?
Sure, Mr. Mullins is here, and in your board package, this is gonna be under item seven E in your board package, the Clinchco voluntary fire department request. I tried to summarize the information that Mr. Mullins gave me, I included the pictures that he sent, and then lastly, he sent a sheet to give all the specs on the truck that they're asking for some assistance with, so. That's item seven E in your packet.
In the packet, seven.
Right there.
Yeah, I do, I seen it earlier.
First off, I wanna thank everybody for voting to fix our tanker, that was a, a big need at the forest fires for the water, and that played a big role with water supply. I also wanna thank Peggy for the donation she sent her fire station, that's much appreciated.
You're welcome.
We have been contacted by Eastmore Chesfire Department in New York, that's somebody that we've worked with in the past few years. And they have their platform truck up for sale, and they wanted to offer it to us first. This truck is an eighty-five-foot platform truck with all the specs as there. And on, on the market, that truck would bring around two-hundred thousand dollars, and they're asking seventy-five for, for us. You know, we have a lot of big structures in our area, and also, if the school was to catch on fire, it's gonna take more than one truck for aerial operations, for fire extinguishing. I know that I come at a bad time with everything that, money-wise, and, but I can only come when they notify us. And the truck is in great shape, I spoke with the mechanic today, he said that he wouldn't hesitate one bit to drive it from New York to Dixon County if we decided to purchase it. It has a lot of good equipment that comes with it, and I, I just figured I would come and present it to the board and, and see what your all's thoughts was. I know that we would have to do modifications to our station to house it, and I'd planned on asking the town of Clinchco for help with that.
Forty-nine feet long and ten feet six high from what I remember on that?
Yeah. The height, we don't have to worry about, but we'll have to go back.
Extend the base.
Extend the base.
Yeah. You don't have a lot of room to go back either. What we're hoping, we still have hope that the corps may come through, we don't know though. I can't, I can't bank on that right now.
I understand.
I guess, here, it is a difficult time, and I, I guess, my problem, or my, my questions come to, I wanna give you guys everything I can. I do. But is this your most critical needs right now? Because we, we've lived without one for so long, and we finally got one, and you got, you got one in Clintwood, and only two, I only know of two buildings, but there may be others that I'm unaware of, I know the hotel and the school.
And you got McClure River Prep plant.
So picture, I, I guess, I think you said it, and I may not have heard it right, what's the potential of you having to have both operating up there at one time, probably, in a structure fire in that school? Probably a big chance of that. I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, I think that's kinda what you're trying to say.
And, I mean, not only, you don't have to have it only on big structures. Clintwood, they use theirs on numerous, just regular residential fires.
Yeah.
So.
And, yeah, there's some other buildings on Main Street too, I think, I agree with you on that. Our, our dilemma too is you each have asked for a tanker. I think all of them have asked so far, except for maybe the new fire station that we just did the building for.
Sandy Ridge and Clinchco expressed a need for a tanker or something.
Yes, Sandy Ridge, Clinchco, Hayside, and Clintwood's even expressed, haven't you, needing a tanker or something?
Need a brush attack truck, I think.
Yeah. That's all really Hayside's looking for, I think. It's a struggle. And you're, you know, and then the situation we're in.
I understand.
It's, um...
But that's, that's all I've got.
I appreciate it, Nathan. And I, I know it's a good deal, I, I, by hearing your words, I... What's the pleasures of the board? I understand, because you guys are gonna have to deal with this budget next year.
Well, I just sit here and figured if we, if we should do that, then another seventy-five thousand takes that four-hundred to five-hundred-and-two thousand dollars over budget, half a million dollars over budget.
That's gonna be hard to overcome.
Yeah. And it, and it's not that don't want to do it, we're about to the point that what can we do? And according to this, the truck will be available after December twelfth pending the successful outcome of the mandatory referendum vote. So that county will have to vote to, to see if it will even be up for sale, right? After the twelfth?
They have got their new truck, they have the insurgency, but they have to do that with the entirety.
Oh, okay, okay.
Bring this to eight J, the fire chiefs?
Mr. Mullins, I don't know what. Sit here and talk and say nothing, and that's basically what we do.
Well, they're on the agenda.
I'm sorry?
I said they're on the agenda, and we approved the agenda.
No, I was just saying about his request.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's what I, I was finishing, I was finishing that up.
I'm sorry.
That's all. Eight J, the fire chiefs, I don't really know what, or who made that request, or...
Eastmore County Fire Chiefs.
I'll wait and start.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, I'm Stephen Powers, I'm fire chief at Clintwood, and just have a couple of things, and I'm sure as everybody anticipates, one of them is just, we'll reference some comments that everybody knew about in the video, and nothing malicious, we're all adults, and we'll get through it, but we need to talk about it. So, that being said, and I'll, as the lady earlier, I'm, I will read most of mine so I can stay well within context.
Is that microphone working?
Hello? You got me?
Is there a recorder? I don't think we have.
Okay.
Mr. Mullins, I don't think, is there a speaker or anything?
I can put that on if you'd like.
Nah, I'm fine, it's whatever y'all need.
Go ahead, I think, go ahead and...
It's been said that Walt Whitman introduced the phrase, be curious, not judgmental. And while there's still much discussion on this, I do believe that we can all agree that judgments we reach will always be better if we start not by reaching to conclusions, but by being curious. If we can do that, then we have the opportunity to take what we have learned and have an impact that is broad as our imagination can reach. During that incident, if you had asked through the proper channels, I would have happily, or one of my other officers told you that we were there for a special occasion to help honor a daughter of a fallen fireman, that the people in that truck were trained to a minimum of Virginia State Fire Program's firefighter two, which is a pro-board accredited class, that the men in that truck had over fifty years of experience combined between the two of them, and that they had brought their equipment in that truck should the need arise for them to respond. One of the reasons that they did bring that truck is it afforded them the opportunity to place their personal protective gear in the back. The reason that we would, would do that is our personal protective equipment contains carcinogens inherently, just the task of assuming the job of firefighter puts that puts all of us at a fourteen percent risk greater of developing cancer. And I don't think anybody would wanna put that in their personal vehicle and then have their family and their children and whoever, you know, in that vehicle to be exposed to I would implore to each and every one of you, get to know your public safety system, talk to us outside of the confines of this board meeting, because regardless of what we do, these board meetings are, always end up about money. And a lot of our problems are about money, a lot of them are not about money. If you visit your stations, talk to your people, you will find that they're a very hard-working individuals, they're well-trained, and they're passionate, like the rest of us, about the health, the safety, and welfare about the citizens of this county. And by working together, we can make great efforts to overcome not only monetary issues, but issues in recruitment, retention, and training. Currently, one of our only means of recruitment are the hopes of attracting someone with a display of equipment at an event, or possibly the hope of planting a seed in the heart of a young child by allowing them to sit in a fire truck. We don't have many tools at our, at hand to, to do those things with. And by the same token, and, and, and I don't mean malice, and I, and I don't think you did either, but I've heard on several occasions, you know, just carelessly spoken at one of these board meetings that, well, we done more damage with the water than we did with the fire. And I hate that, I apologize, I wish that weren't the case. But I would ask you if you have a better solution, because I'm an instructor too with the state of Virginia, I can go and teach fire programs classes anywhere in the state, twenty of my twenty-four rostered members are at least fire programs pro-board certified firefighter one. Or higher. Our department has a ISO rating, which is insurance service organization, PPC rating of four, which is a personal protective class rating, and to put that in perspective for anybody, uh, the city of Bristol, Virginia, which one of our members is actually a firefighter for the city of Bristol, has a PPC rating of three. You've got a career stat. We offer a great bang for your buck. Newport News and Roanoke sport class-one ISO ratings. I would contest to anybody in the county that our fire services are the greatest bargain and the most under-recognized asset that receives county funding. And speaking ill of our abilities, our requests, or things we do within the community, even when they're without malice, inherently damage our ability to recruit and retain personnel. And ultimately, this hurts our department, this hurts our county government, and unfortunately, it hurts the county citizens that depend on both of us. And just lastly, and this is on a personal note, please don't, please don't knock on my windows, it upsets my wife. On a much brighter note, I am beyond grateful for the COVID funding that allowed us to build a beautiful station on Caney Ridge, and I hope each and every one of you reach out to us and come see it. And by the same token, go visit Hayside, go visit Clinchco, go visit our station, any of you are more than welcome anytime. As Mr. Kennedy said, it's allowed us to house additional apparatus up there, and in this current month, it did prove to be very beneficial. We responded to seven brush fires in the Caney Ridge community and a structure fire this month alone, and that is a lot of man-hours. And it wouldn't have been possible without the support and the arduous work that our county administrator, this board, and our community put into that. The outpouring of support from our community has been overwhelming, and it's been incredibly humbling to us. What I want everyone in here to take from this is, in the future, let's let our networking grow, let's let us all grow so we can better serve our community, that's what we're here for to begin with. And really, ultimately, they deserve better from all of us, and we can do better. And if you have any questions, I would be more than happy to answer them.
I have a comment, if I may. Something you said, and I wanna illustrate this because of my experience, it's not, when you go to these events like the football game or whatever, it's a public awareness opportunity.
It is.
And I would ask that if those that are listening in the public... And I would ask that if those that are listening in the public tonight, they need to come to these meetings and emphasize that, yes, I do value fire and rescue being available to us. And I want that put on the budget and they need to be supported properly. But, and I wanna point out, the reason I wanted to point that out, because I hadn't really thought of that piece, and you hit the nail on the head. How many of you been to an airshow from the military? Did you pay any money to go in the gate? I guarantee you did not.
Yeah.
You paid for food and that in there, you know why that's that way? Because their budget is huge to be able to maintain superiority in the world. And they want the public to have the opportunity to say, ah, and see the great things that those aircraft, or even we have soldiers with their tanks and Marines and stuff with some of their equipment at those shows. That's all part of what you just mentioned. And so that's a part of your mission, it's not because you need funding to be able to take care of our families and stuff.
Absolutely.
Properly, when these kind of things happen. And I'll say it again, my big thanks to the Hayside Fire Department and the Hayside Rescue Squad. When my wife went two-hundred-and-fifty feet over the mountain last January, they were there. But I want you, that is good, because that is a valuable part of that because... But I hope that if anyone's listening, they let this board know that they want this properly funded. Because we have, that's a void in our budget. Twenty-eight thousand, twenty-seven thousand dollars a year? That doesn't cover. And I can tell you, Buchanan's already paying some of their, they can't pay everyone, but they're paying some of their firemen already.
And as you mentioned, you know, the volunteer, volunteerism within the state is declining. It's a shift in culture, and it becomes increasingly hard for us to attract people. It becomes increasingly hard for us to retain people.
When I was in that meeting since 2012, it is horrendous the amount of volunteers across the state, the fire departments are seeing drop. They're all struggling. It's a, they talked about, there's typically an insurance policy, a one percent of your fee and premium goes to the fire departments. And they're talking, there's legislation they're trying to push to change that to two percent because it's a huge, huge vacuum. They've got a letter in on Yonkin's desk right now trying to address some of that, but... You know, I know me personally, how many of you got a four-hundred-dollar check recently from the state? Reimbursement of income tax.
Yeah.
I did. I didn't need that. I would much rather know that these services are available to me than that check coming. Back to us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I speak?
Absolutely.
I made a public, I know you're addressing me, and I made a public apology on Facebook. I would like to read it, if you, so, that's all right. I would like to address the many posts that, many hurtful posts have been made today concerning me. I speak with humility and sincerity. To my knowledge, during my four-year tenure, I have never voted against EMS. I have done my best to support and back all the EMS facilities in our county. A total of five-hundred-thousand dollars CARES Act money was distributed to our EMS facilities. I willingly gave my whole heart to support these agencies. I was taught to respect the rescue squad and fire departments. I did not know Rocky Wood very well, but what I did know was all good. He was a man who cared deeply about his community and family. I had the pleasure today to visit personally with his sweet wife, Debbie. I wanted to clear up anything that she might have thought I said or did. I have never met a more sweet and gracious lady. She said that I could use her name in this post. I did not know that she and Rocky have a daughter, Lauren, who is a senior at Ridgeview High School. I did not know how many children he had until Jared told me that they had been asked to be at the football game to honor Rocky and Debbie's daughter. I made a mistake in the tone and demeanor I used when talking to Jared. I readily admit that. I have always had a good relationship with Jared and his family. I also personally visited Jared Sayers today, I visited him twice. One time he was not at home. I apologized, and he graciously accepted my apology. He still told me he intended to do a write-in this Tuesday. I told him that was his right under our constitution, and it was. People who really know me know that I would not intentionally hurt anyone. I honor and I appreciate all EMS workers, everyone of you that are here tonight. And their families who give up so much. As Debbie expressed to me, we all make mistakes, and I am so thankful that God is gracious and merciful. Debbie, I really appreciate your wonderful personality and love for our Savior. I made a mistake. I did not speak Rocky Wood, I did not know that was going on. I did stay for the ballgame and I watched it. And it was very touching and moving. And as I've told my husband, I'm indebted to Rocky Wood. Yes, our house did burn fifteen years ago. And it destroyed the house, except the bricks were left standing. And the Clintwood Fire Department responded and put the fire out. Our problem rose with our insurance company. They wanted to restore the house. We had no problem with that, just restored it according to the Code of Virginia. That they refused to do. The building inspector at that time was Gary Deal, very nice man. He condemned our house and said it was not structurally fit to be restored. We then launched into a great battle with the insurance company. For seventeen months, we battled, we had to hire a lawyer, a construction engineer. It also went to the Code of Appeals that we appoint members to. At that time, Rocky Wood was a member of that Board of Appeals. Joe and I did not attend that meeting because we were advised by our lawyer, his dad, Jeff Sturgill, not to attend. So I did not know what was said at that meeting. But I was told later that Mr. Wood, who was a carpenter, I believe, at that time, backed Joe and I on having our house built according to code. So I owe him, I owed him, Joe and I owe him a debt of gratitude. He gave his life, as I understand it, broke his neck as an employee of the Department of Forestry. All of you here, I have never, I respect you, I admire what you do, and you have, in the, Lord be willing, and if I'm blessed to fulfill my term, you will have my support as much as I can give it. I did not go to the ballgame to run down Rocky Wood. I did not know that was senior night. And Tigger, I did go to your house, I knocked on the front door, I went to the side door. I don't remember pecking on the window, but if I did, I apologize.
And I appreciate your apology, but...
And your wife appeared at the door and told me that we was about a hundred feet away. And she told me that y'all had COVID.
We did.
And I said, I'm sorry, I hope that you recover.
And I do appreciate your apology, but I think you're slightly missing the point of what I had to say.
I think what you had to say was good.
Thank you. But I've learned more about your previous incident than you have about our agencies. And I don't mean any disrespect, but how many firemen in here are EMS? Four, five? There's fire department and there's EMS, there's some combined agencies. I'm not asking everybody to get everything right, we're not going to. I'm asking you to come to me and find out. Anybody!
I agree.
Come to us, find out, and get to know us. Some of us are pretty great people, there's a few that's not. Just kidding. But ultimately, that's what we've got to do.
Here's one thing I would ask, who do you get your orders from? If there's a fire or whatever, where do you get your orders? Who tells you what to do?
I do.
Yes. Does the county minister ever tell you?
No.
We don't control you. And I wanna point that out because if you're washing cars at the fire station, it's your business. If you're there after hours, because I know you have training requirements and other things, it's your business. All those are things that are your business, and I trust that you're in charge and you guys are making sure your people are ready.
Well, we do our best to be a good steward.
Because one of the other things I learned at this meeting, according to this guy, this board sat there and said all along that you're a private organization, you can do, and we have no control or no responsibility. He said, no, we're authorizing you to go out on the roads and do this job. So anything that happens, the county's ultimately responsible for. And that's something we're gonna have to look into in the future to make sure that we're helping you more to be ready and trained and everything, because the training's expensive.
It is, and it becomes, you know, and I realize, it may be some questions that you have. You know, Mr. Kennedy said, you know, if I saw one in Daytona, I wouldn't be surprised. Well, we went to FDIC before, now we rented a vehicle, but that's in Indianapolis. There's training in Pennsylvania that we've attended, you know. Training is not always in our back door.
I know.
Much of the time, it's across the state.
And that's what he said.
Unfortunately, Indianapolis is closer than Virginia Beach is. But those are the realities of that, and you may not be aware of it. Come to us and ask. I don't mind a bit to answer any of the questions. We try to be good and proper stewards of the fundings that we receive. As you saw, we have a 1986 model truck that we still operate. It fought fire week before last, something like that. And it performed well because we have taken care of it. So, you know, while that event occurred, you know, I would, I would ask of you, if you have a question, why something is at an event, any event, just come to us and ask somebody rather than just judge it right off the bat. We don't get compensation, and that may be their compensation that day. They took the truck and let some kid sit in it and hoped to recruit somebody. And that kid may be up here, you know, twenty-five years from now, asking for a new engine. You never know. But ultimately, those are the things that we have to do to recruit and retain people. And I realize you have the questions, just let us answer them properly. We'll all go down the road and we'll all be much better for it in the long run. Anything else?
Mr. Jerome, may I make a comment? I know I've brought two of my grandchildren for the last ten years to storytime and different things, and they really look forward to the fire and rescue being there. Or fire, I don't know if rescues are...
We enjoy it too, because deep down, we're kinda big kids.
And they love it. And Jeremy's made a permanent friend by just coming with the sheriff department. He's made a prominent friend out of one of them, so, I mean, he looks forward to seeing Jeremy. But PR is important to you all. To be out in the community is important.
Well, it can make and break us, and that's one of the reasons I don't ever wanna, personally, I don't ever wanna, you know, this is, YouTube has this, I don't ever wanna see us argue. I don't ever wanna see the board argue, because in the back of my heart, you know, I'm thinking about the business that may think about locating in Dickinson County and watch the board meeting and go, no. Because we have great people, we have a great community. We just gotta put our best foot forward.
I agree with that. I agree with that.
Yeah.
And we're all family.
Absolutely.
I thank you for your remarks.
Thank you.
And I will take them to my heart.
Thank you.
And I will ponder them. And I apologize to each and every one of you here. I ask your forgiveness. I don't know what else I can do.
Well, that's it, and I appreciate it.
And I know you're very intelligent with what you just said, all of y'all are. You give your time, your families give your time. I've been married to a minister for fifty years, I know what it's like. He's really sort of a first responder too, you know. He had a funeral today, me and I both attended. I know what it's like, there's many hours that I spend by myself and many hours I went with him to people who are dying due death, through sickness. So I know, in a sense, they don't, and he did it without compensation. He worked twenty-one years underground in the coal mines and would get up every Sunday morning and go preach and teach and Wednesday night and Sunday night, and visit the sick and healthy sick. I've seen it firsthand, so I know my husband is indeed a first responder, as you all are too. And I just want you to know, I know you've been, some of you have been very ill at me and it was hurtful to hear some of the things that were said about me, very hurtful. Nevertheless, I want you to forgive me for my tone and demeanor, and I did it in improper way, I ask for forgiveness. I will do my best to say, Tigger, that you, the EMS, the sheriff department, the dispatchers, are, you know, we may have to, we're facing a shortfall in our budget, but nevertheless, I will do my best to see that y'all get what you need.
Thank you.
And thank you.
I appreciate it.
One other thing.
Yes.
I wanna, I think y'all know I'm a veteran. I don't know how many times I've been thanked for my service, and most veterans have, and I'm very humbled by it. These are our local heroes, and I would look at them the same as I do our military veterans. And I want, in case you hadn't seen it, a commercial I've seen recently several times that really brought things to light for me was an elderly couple, a couple in a restaurant thanked this prior service member for his service. And he took the time to write out a note on a napkin, and it basically said, "Thank you for being the type of person that I can feel good that I sacrificed and my friends sacrificed to be there for you." And I, again, thank you for what you do.
I don't know if anybody else from the board attended, but I attended Rocky's funeral. And it was very touching. It was very touching from the time he pulled into the school parking lot with the fire department, with the ladder raised, holding the flag. When they brought him out and raised him to the fire truck to haul his body, his last trip on the fire truck, it was very touching. And the county, the county really supported that family and the cause to show respect and be there that day. And I don't know where you could have had it if you didn't have it at Ridgeview High School.
I don't know.
And I'm blessed that I sacrificed the time to come. That's all I have.
So since fire chiefs, were you, Mr. Mullins is here, Mr. Cook was here.
I was gonna say...
Dale, is Dale here?
Rocky's always been, Rocky will always be the chief of Hayside Fire as long as I'm the chief of Hayside Fire. If his family asks for us to bring our truck to his for anything, to the schools, even to their family reunion, or have a ride in the truck, as long as I'm there, they'll have that ride. It's just, Rocky was a hero.
Thank you.
He was a hero. I was with him the day he died, I was with him. Took fire season twenty-four seven. You seen Rocky, you seen me. His legend of life will live on as long as I'm the chief of Hayside Fire.
He was here the day before or the day of advocating for Hayside Fire Department for a truck. He was here the day before or the day of advocating for HESI Fire Department for a truck. And, and then that quick, he was gone.
And what I would like to have seen was get that truck. And then I felt, and I talked to you about this, that it would be appropriate to say something about him on the truck.
And we, we got stickers made, getting them made. Got his name and number. We're going to put on all of our trucks on the windows. Mayor, and then we agreed that we're going to name the station after Rocky.
Good.
I said, it's hard when he's here to talk about it.
That is awesome.
Because, I mean, I, I was with him for 23 years. But I mean, if they ask for our trucks to be at anything, any kind of events, HESI's trucks will be there. And I expect any other fire departments or rescue squads, I mean, if their family asks or whatever, we should be there.
Mr. Jones, may I make a comment? I've been, I think I've got met Rocky the first year I was on the board supervisor. And he never raised his voice. He'd come and ask for things, very professional. And he would make his requests. He didn't demand or anything, he just made them. And very professional. And everybody respected him. Even I, I have, ever since I've been on board, I've respected him coming, asking for things because he never raised his voice. He'd just stand up here to all his needs, go sit down. And he, I mean, that was my impression of him, so professional when he stood up to ask and request something.
He was a long-lost hero.
Yeah, he was.
My house, he always beat one. That's all I got.
I could, I might want to add something to Phillip here. I've worked with him, Rocky, Rocky was there 31 years ago when I joined HESI Rescue. I've been captain there about 49. They've never been announced that I went to Rocky. And we couldn't work out a problem. Since Phillip has took over, we've still got that relationship going. And as long as me and him are there, I think we'll have it. But I have helped them boys by far, went on two or three, and we showed up over the years. And if you remember, doing an FJF part, and I got blew out of a house one time on Big Ridge. What was it, a back drag? It blew us both about 15 foot out of the water.
Oh, my goodness.
I didn't have a fire fire machine. I was a media man. You know, heroes come in all shapes and sizes. Our county is full of them. Our police officers, they help us every day. Our preachers, they preach for us, they pray for us. The church I grew to, I mention probably most of them on the count of my US. I don't ask for that. I want to help the people my ability. And that's what we all do this for. Our preacher can do. You know, sometimes we just need to sit back and open our eyes. That's what I pray.
Mr. Mullins of Sandy Ridge, it's head chiefs, do you have anything or? Like I said, I didn't know who or, or what the plan was, but if you.
I'm Dale Mullins, I'm chief of Sandy Ridge Fire Department. This is John Owens, he's my assistant chief. First thing I'd like to do is thank Mr. Benjamin Kenny, Kennedy for the wonderful words he had spoken up here. You have no idea how much that means to all of us in this room when a citizen does that for us, recognizes us. It's just unreal. Because it's like he said, we didn't, we don't get no pay for it. Just a little recognition goes a long way. You look out over this crowd, it's not just people to me. That's family. In the fire service, and I'm sure every one of them will, will agree with me, we are a close-knit family of brothers and sisters that lay our life on the line every single day we go out on the call. I know if I call for help, they're coming. Somebody's going to be there. They know if they call us for help, we're going to be there. We got their back. And it's, it's hard when you see at least one of them get hurt over something that is said. It affects everyone. I've got family members, I've got nephews, brother-in-laws, my son, my daughter-in-law, all are in the fire service in this county. And to have one of them hurt over something that was just unthoughted said, it hurts. It hurts bad. I would like to thank all of y'all for the extra funding y'all gave us. That was, it will be greatly appreciated. I will agree, tell you that. Like Tigger is telling you, if you have questions, ask. Come and see us. Mr. Evans, he called me yesterday, he's wanting to use our, our department to fit. More than happy to be there. He said, can you have some guys to help us out? Absolutely.
Didn't hesitate, did you?
Didn't hesitate. And it's just, like I said, it's a close-knit family. And if you have questions, ask. If you, if, if you see us out on a call stopping watch, you see us out in the truck, I mean, if you want to come up and say, hey, how y'all doing? That's fine, we, we're more than happy to talk to you. And it's like Tigger said, volunteers in this county is getting few and far between. We have to do everything humanly possible to try to attract somebody into risking their life for nothing. Other than, like Mr. Kennedy said, and he has no idea what that meant to me sitting back there. And I'm sure it meant the same to every one of these firefighters and EMS people back here in Salton. Y'all feel more than welcome to come up to our department. Our meetings is on the third Sunday of each month at 2 o'clock. If you want to come up and look around, you're more than welcome.
I intend to come up this week, and I just got too sick to even come.
I mean, if I come into L.A., yeah. I mean, but Mr. Kennedy changed the mic. Just a thank you from him. Thank you all for being here. I love our department. I love everyone here. It's my family. And what you said, I guess it hurts all of us, I just want, it affects all of us. I just want you all to appreciate what we do. It ain't the money. It ain't what you give us, it's your support for what we want, most of all, from all of you. And we felt we didn't get that. But me, during the Rachel Chapel fire, I worked 97% of it. What the community done for us. I can offer them love.
Me too.
It's a modern, you know, firefighter that's at your edge. I'm on the fire. That's my face. Thank you, Dale. I know that all of you.
And I, I would like to add, it's not only the firefighters out here. We have had house fires. See these gentlemen back here in these uniforms? They pull loads for us. They've changed our bottles for us. You know what I told them? Guys, y'all up on Sandy Ridge, you need, use the bathroom? You want a cup of coffee? You want somewhere to eat your lunch? Here's the door code. The deputies have the door code to our building. They can go in anytime they want to. At rest, use the bathroom, get them a cup of coffee, or eat their lunch. Every one of us in here has got each other's back. And like I said, when one gets hurt, we all get hurt. And all we want is a little respect. That's all we ask. Like I said, we appreciate y'all. What you gave us this evening. We'll get out of your way.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dale. Mr. Mullins is saying he doesn't have anything. Anyone else, maybe I notes said chiefs, but anybody else want to say anything?
Good afternoon. My name is Michael Deal. I'm a first lieutenant for Sandy Ridge Rescue. And I'm also a senior fireman for Quinwood Fire Department. But among us here, 95% of us are volunteers. That saves the county citizens in approximately $16 million of funding to pay these people. So be mindful of that. And be mindful that even though we may be EMS workers on the scene of a fire, you're asking for help because they're shorthanded during the daytime. And these things we have to take into account. We have to train amongst each other to do these things. But we thank you for your support that you've given us throughout these years. And we ask that you continue to support us and ask those questions at an appropriate time. And be there for us when we need you. So we thank you. And we hope that tonight has been a learning lesson for everybody, even the people that are watching, that we are here and we want to be seen, we want to be heard, and we want to be there to help you. So if you have any questions, please come to us. So thank you.
Thank you.
Members, Peggy's with the rest room, y'all? Anybody else need restroom break or?
No, I apologize to everybody for coughing. I've just had bronchitis for a year.
We can recess for a few.
All right, we'll do a five-minute recess, Ms. Clerk. All right, we'll do a five-minute recess, Ms. Clerk. Brings us to item number ten. I'd asked for this to be on the agenda. That's been answered by Ms. Cronkite and Mr. Lambert. Those questions are answered now. I don't have anything on that. That would bring us to ten B, fire housing piece, Mr. Barton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That item is in the addendum package that you have.
Wait, what? I thought Mr. Lambert was gonna speak again.
Oh, if he wants... Well, I'd asked for that to be on the agenda. My questions were answered, so.
Well, but he... But earlier you said he was gonna... He had a few more comments he had, too.
You have more comments on your...
That was con... And yes, we did. All three of us had comments about... We don't know why we were put on the agenda. Yeah, I'll get enough con here. We were sent a note this morning to be put on the agenda. And I'd like to read the note for the board. It says, "Two of the IDA members have sought fit to hijack..." And I don't know what that means, "to hijack our board of supervisors meeting." "Mr. Yates and Mr. Lambert, so I don't see any reason the two of them cannot come to explain the board of supervisors and the public why the very important connections are still not done to the IDA action."
So can you explain it then?
I'll explain it to you.
Well, why haven't the fifty connections to the homes been done? Tell me in your own words.
That's your... Well, that's your position. That's your position because we have two of them.
Can I...
Well, can I finish?
Because I know why.
Okay.
I talked to the people at, let me see where... The HealthWagon. They gave me the person that's over their internet and their Wi-Fi and all this. So he told me that they have not got all their funding together yet.
Well, that's right. That's my point.
And he said that their funding would be hopefully within the next two weeks. And we get fifty and Wise County gets fifty.
Well, what? Well, that's the point.
If I may, Mr. ...
No, no, no. Mr. Lambert, you wanted to come up here and speak, so let's speak.
No, I didn't go up here.
Well, you jumped up, didn't you?
You come... You asked me...
You like to do this, so let's do it.
And I ask you...
So why didn't your board vote to send the VCDA application in October to get fifty families' internet?
Oh, that's very easy.
Well, then, let's hear it.
Because you started sending those nasty text messages and emails.
Because you don't get nothing done. You sit on your hands. That's why. Why didn't... Why or not... Why are fifty families not connected? Was it because there was an election on November seventh? And you sent a letter to the editor against me? Was that one reason why you delayed it on your board?
Keep building your case.
I'm asking...
Mr. Chairman, may I please?
No, you cannot. I'm asking Mr. Lambert. He's a member of the IDA appointed by this board. He said he can answer it. He can't answer it. Go ahead and answer it.
Because I'm not a competent lawyer that you claim to be did not read the applications well enough to know.
Well, then explain it for me then.
I'm going to if you'll shut up and let me... I'm going to explain them to you.
Mr. Integrity?
Because you did not read the applications well enough that the board had in front of them one day prior to our meeting where the application did not... Did not. Absolutely did not. The chairman of the board is here and the executive director's here will tell you the same thing. The application did not address the benefit to Dickinson County.
What did it say?
Only to Russell County. We asked...
Russell County wasn't involved, Mr. Lambert.
Would you please let me finish?
Russell... Well, you're wrong. I've got it in front of me.
Wise wasn't.
I mean, I'm sorry. Thank you, Miss Will. But that's the reason. So they are approved.
Did you ask before the meeting?
They are approved.
Did you ask before the October meeting?
Ask what?
Why?
Mr. Chairman, may I please address this?
Sure.
Thank you very much. Just to make the... For the... Everyone that is here listening, the process for the VCDA applications is as follows. The IDA of any locality has to be the applicant to VCDA per statutory code. So when the state allocated five hundred thousand dollars to VCDA to be used for the Starlink, the telehealth access fund, it then opened it up for the IDA boards to then apply to VCDA for those funds, as we have done multiple times since I've been here in the past year. The applications, the latest two that were not directly from Dickinson County, we received one from the HealthWagon and one from the Cumberland Plateau Health District. The first one from the HealthWagon, we received in August. It was addressed on the board meeting of August the 21st. It was approved with no issues. The second application was received on September the 8th, the day before, on a Friday, when our IDA meeting was on Monday. I did not have time to review the application thoroughly. However, I did ask the Cumberland Plateau Health District if they could clarify what they would be using the two units for that they were making the application for. I received a very vague answer to which I brought to the board at that meeting. At that time, Mr. Lambert, some other board members questioned what the purpose or the benefit would be to Dickinson County. It is accurate that the application that they submitted to us was not accurate. So they asked me to take it back to the Cumberland Plateau Health District to get more clarification. So the next day, I reached out to the Cumberland Plateau Health District. I received the information. At our next board meeting on October the 2nd, I provided the information to the board. It was then approved. At that time, both of those applications were sent to VCDA, which was addressed at their board meeting on October the 19th. VCDA meets every two months. At that point, once the VCDA board voted and approved those applications, then grant documents comes back to the IDA. It is a requirement per statute that the IDA has to vote in order to accept the grant documents and a resolution has to be passed in order to enter into the agreement with the grant documents. It is true that those grant documents were delayed by seven days. Our meeting that was scheduled last Monday, the IDA had to cancel. We did not have legal counsel that was going to be present. It was my desire as well as the board members' desires that we cancel that meeting. However, after that meeting, because of the issues with the Starlink, we did not mean to intentionally withhold or hold up that process. We had a special call meeting to which it was passed. VCDA has the documents, so at the end of the day, it was delayed by seven days.
So why was a special call meeting necessary if you had already canceled the November meeting?
No, I canceled the November meeting because we didn't have an attorney present at our regularly scheduled meeting. So we were able to get everyone together a week later to have a special call meeting in order to process it.
So it wasn't after hours throwing a fit because we had fifty families that didn't have connections?
It absolutely was because you threw it in.
Absolutely. That's right. Because... And we can, you know, we can do this. You had your attorney send me a letter. So frankly, I'm an attorney. I can't talk to representative people. Well, I beg to differ. My career's been far superior than yours.
So this is telling us...
No, this is Mr. Integrity here. I want the public to see Mr. Integrity.
I think she explained the reason.
Well, she didn't, but he wanted to come up here and I had...
He can't even take an explanation.
You can't give one because you don't know.
And while I was sitting back here, he was texting Cry Baby. Cry Baby.
Yeah, and I want to say something. This letter says Cry Berry. That's totally unprofessional.
Well, that's none of your business.
No idea. And this is the thing I didn't say earlier. Everyone on this board has experienced that same stuff as you did. And I'm gonna tell you, this is a black man with my face on it because I did the dirty thing of voting for Peggy to be chairman that year. I got that a week after from him.
I have no clue what that is.
It came from you. And then I... And this is the thing you guys need to understand. This is what he does. The meeting where Mr. Comer came in and they had a little altercation in the bathroom, and you said it just now. The reason you're on his rear end is because he endorsed the other candidate. And Larry did. And Comer endorsed the other candidate, and that came out in the bathroom after we recessed.
Larry, do you have anything you want to say on this? Go ahead. Mayor, I'm sorry.
I want to first thank Dana, our executive director, for explaining in great detail exactly what...
Yeah, and she did, to be, and that's why I was gonna skip over there.
She did, and I appreciate that. And I was the one ultimately that made the decision to delay the meeting by seven days because our attorney, our director, could not be here. So let's put all that in the past. In your letter that you mailed out to Dana yesterday, asking Coach Buscher...
I didn't mail a letter. It was a couple of weeks ago. Approximately two weeks ago. Approximately.
Well, I saw it yesterday.
Well...
You said I hijacked your... You said I hijacked your meeting in October. Refer back to your agenda of last month's meeting. Be item six A, old business, Town Hayside. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. You have anything else on it? Anybody else?
No.
So we've got the application, then.
Everything is to be seated. We're writing for a check.
But there had to be a special call meeting to do it. And it had been three months.
How many... I do have something. How many of you knew that that was all taken care of on this board? Because I knew several days ago.
Well, you know how I didn't know? Because the executive director of the...
I thought it'd already been taken care of.
Well, that's right. So did I. The Virginia Coalfield Economic Development Authority Director, Mr. Belcher, was emailing me asking why the Dickinson County IDA failed to send in its application. So that's when I got to looking around. Then the HealthWagon, through Mr. Purdy, who had fifty families to connect in this county, was asking why the application hadn't been sent to VCDA and approved. Just so happens, coincidentally, there was an election and a member of the IDA board was trying to get me beat and do anything he could do, as he is tonight, to make me look bad, i.e. hold up fifty connections for families. It's all coincidental, I guess.
Mr. Evans, and no time was the application delayed and being sent to VCDA. It was there to them by their deadline.
Well, we can get with Mr. Belcher and get with Mr. Purdy and see why it's been three months, but in fifty families without internet.
Where were these fifty families that applied for Starlink? Where are they located?
That's something that the HealthWagon has handled. I haven't had anything to do with it.
Well, I don't understand. The HealthWagon is supposed to distribute, give these to fifty families for health reasons? No, I think they're just available for fifty applications is what he explained to me. Do they have fifty applicants?
Yes.
Yes, they do, and... Was it the same thing, Starlink, that they had to...
And I've spoken with Dr. Tyson at the HealthWagon, explained to her what the delay was prior to the meeting being canceled. She said she understood. Whenever we were able to get to it, they were in no hurry. And then today, I spoke with Jeff Gillan from the Cumberland Plateau Health District, and he indicated that they're having some funding issues on their end. And whenever they got the units that they would be happy to have them.
But the people that applied and were eligible and were said they were gonna get awarded it three months ago, still don't have it.
Well, unfortunately, Mr. Evans, there is a process in order to get the funding from VCDA that is multiple steps.
That's been delayed according to the director of VCDA. But not only does that matter...
There was no delay. There was a seven-day delay, which I admit to.
And while we're discussing Starlink, the only question I ever had about Starlink was early on in the process, when we first had the gentleman, Mr. Purdy, come before us and tell us about how this is all gonna work. My question was, if that meeting, which you can go back and look at minutes, was great, the county's gonna fund this for two years for all these families. Now, what's gonna happen when that two years expires? Are you gonna keep funding?
No. They have to pay for it themselves or give it up.
They've already been getting notices that they owe.
Have you told them that, though?
Yes, I know.
We...
Because when you look them up, you can tell them.
Yes, we've done this. We've got two hundred of these.
I like calls about it that a lot of them are on the two-year right now, and...
And they start expiring.
Yeah, and so they're sending... Starlink's sending them bills. And they called and asked me. I said, "Well, tell me when you signed up." And it's just over two years ago. So I said, "Yeah, that's your bill."
Well, you'll have a few that are not going to be able to afford it.
Yeah, and they're gonna drop it.
They're gonna drop it. So being more...
We got people lined up wanting it.
With the Starlink that's helping the children of the county who can't afford to get loaned, they might have to drop it.
I don't know. That's a good question because...
Well, then, if they don't pay it, then we're...
They don't pay. They were told by... We were told by the Cumberland Plateau then by the end of 2024 that ninety percent of Dickinson County...
Twenty-four.
Well, they said twenty-four over at that meeting.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, in the email that you just sent, and actually, Mr. Belcher says, "We have the one hundred and fifty thousand dollar application from the IDA for the HealthWagon Starlink accounts." However, this was directly related to the two Starlink accounts for the Health District.
Why do you think he sent that to me?
I don't know why he sent it to you.
Because it wasn't being moved. That's just... Why would he send it to me?
Well, I don't understand why two IDA members are hashed and hounded when there's seven. Where is the rest of them? Where is all of the others' names? I understand Mr. Buchanan agreed with them that there was errors in that grant, but these are the only two that you're hashing.
Editorials.
And if it took seven votes, where's the other five?
These two seem to be the most involved.
Because we hijack all the meeting pages.
They cungar meetings. I'm just trying to... They cungar meetings, I'm trying. No, my question's answered.
The public meetings.
No, I don't agree.
The public meetings. Everybody has to write to the D. Everybody has to write to the public.
My question's answered. I'm, I don't have anything.
I don't know if the public knows. You can request, and I think Mr. Sturgill will back me up. If you send a text message while you're sitting here in a meeting, it can be void.
Absolutely.
For sure, true.
And if you saw me text someone, somebody's wanting my political science fact. So I want to give them to.
I want to address the entire board. I go back to my previous comment. I would highly, highly suggest that you, uh, require your attorney to.
I would welcome that.
Do that investigation of the board.
That's, and.
Investigation of fraud. I mean, what are we, what are your legend that we've done?
Well, I don't know. It's your chairman that's alleging we're all doing wrong, so do an investigation.
I don't have the minutes. I don't, I don't know what was done.
Mr. Evans, when that's found out that your allegation are untrue, the board expects an apology for your infamous Facebook.
Which?
Hannah Dixon payment.
Which allegation?
Allegations in the letter that you just sent me.
Okay. So if I get the minutes, I could, we could.
Those minutes will be approved at our next IDA board meeting.
Those minutes have to be approved a month behind us?
Well, they're four, I think you're four months behind.
We're not. We're actually two months behind, and the first month is my fault. My minutes keeper wasn't able to be there. I took the minutes, and unfortunately, I haven't had time to do those yet.
But I did request those several days, a week or so ago.
And I sent you the last four meeting minutes that I had, yes.
But none of the relevant meetings on this piece.
Well, and the, the minutes for August 21st did indicate that the $150,000 for the Health Wagon was approved.
I'm just trying to get family's internet.
Uh, what about then, starting to sign people up down my reach?
Have that investigation done. We would highly look forward to it.
That's fine.
And we would expect, expect an apology, Mr. Evans, to the entire IDA.
Okay.
Investigation is complete.
I didn't see you write a letter to them when you called Ms. Lusselire like three times, and she told you she didn't say what you said she said. Remember that?
She's saying no apology to that.
See Paul Justin, I said. I mean, you.
More, more than what you're managing up to do.
Okay.
And if your questions are answered, we probably need to move.
Well, they have been like for fifteen minutes, so. Do we want to go to 10B then?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Uh, 10B Fair Housing. This has to do with the Trammell DHCD block grant funded project. 10B is in the addendum packet. Um, and, uh, what we're going to do, this will, uh, each year, we have to do something, uh, towards, uh, fair housing. So I'm going to read this statement here and have that recorded in the minutes, and that will be our yearly, uh, activity. So Dickinson County endorses the concept of fair housing and is committed to ensuring equal opportunity for all persons residing in Dickinson County to live in decent housing. Dickinson County prohibits discrimination in the sale, purchase, rental, or financing of housing against any person on the basis of race, color, religion, national origin, sex, age, familial status, disability, veteran status, gender identity, sexual orientation, or source of funds. The county administrator is a designated authority for investigating all complaints of fair housing discrimination. We must keep ourselves aware of these provisions of fair housing in our county. This item on the agenda is presented as an annual activity in support of community development block grant funded projects in the town of Trammell, Virginia. Does anyone have any questions or comments concerning this topic? If not, then that's all we have on that item, so.
Does it need approval?
Do we have to approve it?
No, ma'am. It's just right in the minutes.
All right, thank you.
10C?
Uh, 10C, you have in your addendum packet as well. Uh, what you have before is a notice of public hearing. We're needing to schedule a public hearing for our next board supervisors meeting on December 19th at 5:50 p.m. Uh, for the purpose of, uh, taking public comment on, uh, the Dickinson County Circuit Clerk's Office, uh, paying bonuses to their five employees. Um, the amounts are different, but the total's not exceed $12,603.66. Uh, Mr. Edwards sent a, a letter over yesterday. Uh, copy's attached to the third page of this, uh, giving the information on these bonuses. Uh, Mr. Sturgill worked up the ordinance and the notice of public hearing. This is the same thing that we had to do last year to be in compliance before we could issue these. And, uh, as he states in his letter, he has funds available for this appropriation from his account code 400 from the state, and he will reimburse us for the cost of the bonuses and the county share of the FICA tax. So I'll answer any questions anyone has, and if not, we need a motion to schedule a public hearing on December 19th.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Sir, second.
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
As well. Let's take us to closed session, please, of our agenda. And we'll make a motion.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we go into, uh, closed session pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711, A7, potential litigation, B, economic development update, Irvington Elementary Property. Uh, that's section 2.2-3711, A5.
Sir, second.
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? Is that all we need? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I will make a motion that the only thing discussed in our closed session was what we was the pursuit to the code, the junior code, section two point two dash thirty seven eleven A seven potential litigation and section two point two thirty seven dot dash two thirty seven eleven A five economic development updates of the Irvington Elementary property.
For a second.
Second.
Ms. Willis, how do you vote?
I vote aye.
Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Ms. Kaiser.
Yes.
Mr. Peters.
Aye.
Yes for me as well, Madam clerk. Any motions coming out of closed session?
We need a motion to deed the.
No, we got to accept it first.
Oh, we got to accept.
We got fourteen A, which is got in seven A one in your packet.
So we need a motion to accept the Irvington Elementary property from Dixie County Public School.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
As well, I would suggest we skip to item three, A three please, fourteen A three.
Would be seven A three in your packet.
Uh, yes. Do you want to make that motion?
I'll make the motion to, um, to convey by deed to the industrial. I'll make the motion to, um, to convey by deed to the Industrial Development Authority the Irvington School property.
With exception.
With exception of, uh, personal, uh, property in it.
Including the playground.
I'll second it.
Yeah.
Uh, any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
As well.
The motion, I think, should have stated the playground equipment, not just the, I don't know what else. It's down there that's personal property, do you?
Surplus personal property.
Yeah.
I think's what's intended for the motion as far as that.
There's some basketball courts, goals and stuff.
There is.
Yeah, I forgot about that.
So we're just conveying literally the real estate.
Real estate.
And both deeds, right?
So do we want to formally table the 14A2 then, I guess?
I was going to ask her, can we, do we need to act on it at all?
Well, I don't know.
I don't know. I don't know either, I'm asking.
Mr. Chairman, mask, was the, the motion for both deeds?
Was it clear?
Yeah.
It was.
Both, both tracks.
There's three tracks.
Minus.
Okay, okay.
The personal real estate.
Got it.
The question was, do we need to do anything with the, the request for the equipment?
Not at this time.
No, I think we can just drop it.
Just pass it, yeah.
Correct.
All right, so for clarity for the record, the motion was to convey both tracks that previously were accepted to the Dickinson County IDA, clerk. That was the, that's the.
All tracks.
Right, both tracks.
Yeah.
Well, I think there was three, he said.
All, all tracks.
Yeah.
So all tracks, Madam Clerk, were accepted via the first vote unanimous, and all tracks were subsequently conveyed via the second vote to the IDA. All hearts clear on that issue?
Yeah.
All right, that'll bring us to supervisor comments, Ms. Willis.
I have no comments except the praise for the fire department for what they did for the community that I grew up in. And had it not been for them, we would have lost numerous homes over in there.
Ms. Kaiser, or excuse me, I'm sorry, Ms. Lewis.
I wish everybody a good, good shopping.
Ms. Kaiser.
I do thank the fire department for showing up. I'm pleased for a relatively, um, good board meeting. Um, it could have been worse, and, and I appreciate everybody, I appreciate everybody that's come out. I hope the fire rescue EMS or whoever have all went away from here feeling better and feeling that we do support them.
Peters. Oh, sorry.
That is, you know, that's all I know how to do is just let them know, and they, they just need to search that in their hearts to accept us for trying. And, um, see you about next month, we're about to finish our four-year term.
Peters.
I just say, find the funding to sustain rescue and fire.
Fix it, yeah.
The citizens of Dickinson County need them to be there.
I don't have any comments, is there a motion, Richard?
I too would like to thank everyone in my district that had confidence in me to put me back in for years, and I just pray that my help will hold up till I can serve the four year.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion, we adjourn.
Do I second?
I'll second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We adjourn.